Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the order of the Brunswick City Commission Meeting, Wednesday, October 2nd. We will rise by invitation, led by Pastor Michael Martin, God and Land Minister, followed by our faithful believers, led by our own Mayor Portem, Vincent Williams. Please rise.
Let us pray. Gracious God, for all that look down upon these proceedings tonight. Your word declares, God, that we should trust in the Lord in all our ways, and may not allow understanding, but just to acknowledge in all our ways, so that you can direct our path. I trust, Lord, that this is well pleasing in your sight at a time we reserve where we could pray prior to the commissioners meeting, and we thank you who allowed us to do so. We pray, oh Lord God, and I believe that the destiny of our community, of our city, this entire world, oh Lord God, is in the hands of those that pray for it. Second Corinthians 14 says that if my people, which are called by my name, whom themselves pray, and seek your face, and turn from all our wicked ways, you will forgive our sins. We're here from heaven, and you will heal the land, oh Lord God. We thank you. We are also instructed, God, to pray for all of our leaders, all those in government authority, oh Lord God, nationally, globally, so we pray for our Brunswick City Commissioners. We pray for Mayor Martin O'Hara, oh Lord God. We pray that you just uphold his hand with the right of your righteousness, oh Lord, and in spite of all of the dilemmas, circumstances, problems, God, we believe your word, that all things will work for the good of them that love the Lord, especially them that are called according to your purpose, and we just bless your name. So look upon these proceedings tonight, oh Lord. I pray for the spirit of unity and it being preserved even now, God, and most of all, I pray that all that have not decided to accept him as their personal Savior, oh Lord, I pray that it will be so in these last hours, in Jesus' name we pray. We thank you.
Amen. Good evening, to you, Lord, all the United States of America, and to the Republic of which you stand, one nation under God, beneath the biblical, with the liberty of the innocent all. Well, thank you, everybody, for coming out. Also, thank the ones who came for our work session. Our work session, we had a really mighty discussion concerning some issues that are pending before the city commission, and it was party, as it stands. But nevertheless, we as commissioners, we move forward in what we do and our thinking, and together, this commission, we want the best that has been served in this city of Brunswick, or we have to introduce new questions. All right. So move right on. Commissioner, is there anything to add or leave from the agenda? I'm hearing that. Okay, we'll move right on. Public commentator, we have an individual, she's Catherine Neal King. She'd like to come speak for the commission. Please forward, take your name, and then give your address, and I'll give you five minutes to state your case.
Thank you, Mary. I am Catherine Neal King, 403 Anaheim Drive. I'll be very brief. I'm here today to take some guidance and assistance, and in short, I'm attempting to open a restaurant here in the city of Brunswick, attempt since my husband and I since April of this year. I've spoken to several different city officials, Mr. Stego, Commissioner Williams, and what have you, and was trying to get ready next to how to get some funds to open. When we first attempted to open at 1410 L Street, we put money in to open up. The property came in and told us that if we get X, Y, and Z with the hood and oven and stove, we could open. He came back and told us that we could. So now we moved to a different location, a better location, trying to get another restaurant open again. However, we have lost so much money at 1410 L Street that we were short of funds, so we would like some assistance, some direction as to how to move forward. Mr. Stego had spoken with me and said that he would make the hell to ensure my restaurant will be open that was since April of this year. I heard that, too. So that's why I'm here. Thank you for your presence.
Thank you, Ms. King. I would ask you to talk to our city manager, to see what can be done, and also if this commission can do anything. We are very business friendly in this community, in our city, trying to be more focused on having people open their businesses, and being self-aware, if I can. Talk to the city manager, and if he was, he should be able to decide as to the other one, what restaurant you should go with.
Yes, thank you, Colonel.
Thank you. City manager, please give her a word. Okay, this city president, anybody else who's in the center of this floor?
Yes, Mayor, I'm Thank Jones.
Please make the name of your address, please.
Thank you, Jones. My Lord, first step, and this is our celebration of October. Mr. Mayor, I am here tonight on behalf of Saint Anthony's Episcopal Church. As some of y'all know, we dedicated and celebrated our new historic sign last Friday, and I'm here on behalf of the congregation and the pastor, Lord, as duty ward, to thank you and Commissioner Martin, City Manager Erwin, and Assistant City Manager Myers, for attending and giving us your support and that regard. We're very grateful, and I just wanted to be sure that you know we thank you for all that you did for us, and especially Commissioner Martin, in helping and guiding us to give that sign to fruition. So thank you all for coming.
Thank you, and please note that the mayor and Commissioner Martin, which was representing the whole city council, they would have been there, they could have, but I think they sent us instead. And we appreciate, let's say, as a nation, being to this community, and thank you for recognizing the fact that we are here together, and hopefully, with that sign, we'll be a beacon of light to other organizations or historical buildings that want to have a sign built, and that I've come from there, established in this world. It's the world, it is, it's a beautiful sign, and really thank you for coming to this event, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Run along, please. Okay, city president, anybody else?
No, Mary, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, our next item on our agenda is recognition, presentation, and awards. Proclamation presentation to the Southeast Georgia Health System. Vice President is not here, he has answered, Mr. Scott Wilson, who's the Director of Radiology Services, who received this proclamation in support of breast cancer awareness. I also noticed that there are sorority that's in the house that recognize the breast cancer awareness. After we just proclamation, I would like for the sorority to really like to say something, and they can say something. Okay, so let me come down here, Mr. Wilson. So you don't have to be here.
I don't have to be here.
Hi, Harvey.
Hi, Harvey.
Hello. This is a proclamation to the mayor of the city council. As you know, we have been supporting breast cancer awareness for quite a while, this is breast cancer awareness month, month of October, and we issue this proclamation in hopes that people around the world will see and know it and be aware of what's happening. And it does not only just happen to women, it can happen to men as well, so we want everybody to be aware and to have those, what do they call, buddy checks?
Yes.
Have those checks to make sure, and be seen, so there are technology now to help eradicate that, but yet still, it does happen in our community. This proclamation says from the mayor of the city council of Brunswick, Georgia, proclamation, whereas nationally, oh, 246,000 women and men are diagnosed with breast cancer each year, and in 2019, breast cancer continues to be a common cause of cancer in the Southeast Georgia region, and where October is natural breast cancer awareness month, with the aim of increasing awareness of the disease and facilitating research into its causes, its prevention, diagnosis, treatment, and cure, and whereas the health and well-being of our community are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness and of education regarding breast cancer, and from encouraging our citizens to take action to lower their risk of developing this deadly, this disease, I don't say deadly, because we'll eradicate that. And therefore, now I call the L R B, the mayor of the city of Brunswick, love of mine, fellow commissioners, Commissioner Johnny Casey, Commissioner Felicia Harris, Commissioner Julie Martin, and Mayor Portem, Vincent Williams, are joining the Southeast Georgia Health System, the Susan T. Coleman Coastal Georgia affiliate, the American Cancer Society, and communities across Southeast Georgia to proclaim Friday, October 11th, 2019, as Pink Out Friday. So be aware that October 11th, 2019, is Pink Out Friday, and by encouraging our citizens to wear pink on this day, October 11th, to increase awareness of this disease, to show support and recognition of our neighbors, our family, and friends who have been impacted by breast cancer, and to take an active role in helping to make breast cancer a part of our past and not our future, signed by me, the L R B, Mayor of the city, and testified by Naomi Atkins, our city clerk. And I want to say that we can do this. You can wear pink the whole month, whole month of October if you want to, that'd be fine. Just bring awareness of this, what's going on, and as we bring awareness to, it's like, yeah, I need to go get checked, or yes, let's have somebody I know get checked, or ask somebody, have you had a check? We need to always be aware of things that can help, that bound our health, and I'm so glad that City of Brunswick is a partner with Southeast Georgia Health System, and also this sorority, which we have individuals on this sorority, who's when I was raised. Sir, I stand my hand.
Thank you so much.
This is you. Yeah, I stand my hand, and you all are welcome to say something, you might, please.
Oh, sure. Yes.
So we, the Southeast Georgia Health System, Coleman Coastal, Georgia affiliate, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, and the American Cancer Society are excited to help proclaim Friday, October 11th, as Pink Out Friday, and we want to be here to eradicate breast cancer, and you know, it's going to happen, because we don't know when, but it is going to happen, and we want to be a part of that, and we appreciate the city supporting us in that, and we want to support everyone, and encourage everyone to wear pink, I think, out Friday, and like he said, for the entire world.
Absolutely, and I bring greetings from Zeta I O O, making chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, where we truly support breast cancer, and we will be wearing pink throughout the year and forever. And so, we are also partnering with the Southeast Georgia Health Care System, the American Cancer Society, and Susan G. Coleman, to bring awareness to the Brunswick community on breast cancer. Here with me is Ms. Felicity Little, she is the chairman of Zeta I O O, making chapter, Women in Healthcare Awareness, and she has some information for you.
I just want to share with everyone, the hospital actually has several activities and events that will be going on throughout the month of October, in addition to their Pink Out Friday. They have memos and manicures that's coming up, so I just encourage you to go to their website, get more information about that event and others, because everything that we're doing is bringing more awareness, it's the reason why my hair is pink, not because I'm a member of a great sorority, but just to bring awareness to breast health. One in eight women, so I want you ladies to think about that, when you're in a place where there's a failure or at your church, and one in eight women will be diagnosed with breast cancer, and that is truly unacceptable. So I just encourage you to share this information, so that you know, all of our loved ones, not only women, but also men, can take their breast health more seriously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we're proud.
That's right.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I want to take my time, but forget me.
That's right.
Okay. Okay, yeah. Okay.
to breast cancer. We understand now, as we did before, about how it affects people, and that early detection can help people to get treatment for it as well. So thank you for that. All right, we are at item number two of public hearing. Resolting petition number 1901, question, resolting of 1828 Wolf Street from General Residence to Local Department of City, attorney, if you can.
That's correct. Brent and John Hunter were at a conference this week for landowners and air brokers for the breakback property, so there's some great ideas from that conference. They asked me to fill in the details about them. There should be discussed this property and land, potential rezoning, and the process of the management staff, and that is a good for, if I can fill it. This is a rezone for 1828 Wolf Street. If you take a look at what is page number one, and on your packet at the bottom, this particular property is a corner lot, it's built in a manner that it's a commercial building, I mean, for all intents and purposes, it's been used as a commercial building. John did extensive amount of research, which is dating back to the 1800s, it's one of the buildings or zone is commercial use sometime, possibly in the 1960s, but overall, rezoning here, and it became general residential. However, there have been businesses that have been operating out of that building for many, few years. Recently, they were approached to see if there was a different option, you know, like a cafe in the building. When they looked into it, it was generally residential, though we could use this, not allow, and not allow to be obtained through variance or condition of use. The only option that was remaining was a rezoning, and actually, it stays that, it's sort of, we said, we need to rezonate this property, it's already a commercial property, it's just a residential area. The request to rezonate means for general residential to local commercial, local commercial would take, it would pay, which would see to this intent of commercial, essentially to, for commercial, certain commercial uses in a neighborhood for residential setting. You can see that there are several businesses that listed their retail businesses, one would be a restaurant, there's a multitude of other uses, so we necessarily have that one in it. So this was presented in staff, is in favor of a rezoning to local commercial. Some of the ideas behind that would be a force of mutually comprehensive plan, suggesting walkability, and a cafe in a residential area would otherwise benefit from having amenities that are able to be easily accessed by the residential area. So a mutually comprehensive plan, does not cause adverse, does not cause adverse aesthetic impact, doesn't cause adverse effect on traffic flow, traffic safety, population density. In essence, it didn't appear that it would be taking effect in the area, it's other business that is located in general, which has been operating, it's not in a residential community, and it's in multiple planning, zoning, or appeals, and they affirm statute recommendation of rezoning for one, House of September 11th.
I'll do a restating to your question. Thank you, sir, for presenting. Commissioners, any questions before I see the attorney?
One, and that is, in driving all around in that area, it is obviously very residential, there's a couple of churches, too, but I think my concern would be making sure that based on the list of permitted uses for, I think, especially as the older, it's not applying for anything specific per se, other than maybe a cafe, but I would be concerned if, for instance, number 19, a package delivery store, were to locate in that area, I think that would have a rather counter effect on that neighborhood, and comes and goes, and so I didn't know whether we could.
It was a discussed item, it's one of the first items of our month, but it would be subject to the licensing requirements of the city's alcohol, that's coming before you. I don't think it would need essential partners, your church has been, it would be that school location is also prohibited, residential, well, it's not prohibitive, tactic of alcohol or something, the city should take their advisement, we believe, have neutral grounds to deny such a business.
And the other question I had was parking, because in looking at the location, now on page one, there is the Bay of Lot Act behind there, I wasn't sure, it looks like a little bit of it runs with the subject property, but not all of it, so is the only parking available, long street parking, and do you have a doubt?
I recall correctly, I believe that the cafe would be served by a long street parking, and the current business is already operating, I believe, have parking spots in the area that you're discussing.
So like, here's a lot of parking, so they're, they're not, they're not going to be parked, for instance, if they don't have a business, because they're not going to have to park with them?
That's not understanding, I think that it would be more walkability, catwalk type situation, or it's a service to people that are in using the other businesses, it also costs a cafe. That is.
And it's water, it's been there all the time, hundred years, over a hundred years.
Is that taken, is it public here? Yes.
Any further questions, commissioner? Is the owner here?
The owner, yeah.
Anything you'd like to say to the justice?
Yeah.
Anything you'd like to say to the address of this commission?
No.
Okay. Commissioners, any further questions? Okay, thank you. We'll open this up for, this is a public hearing, so we'll open it up to anyone, let's speak for or against the granting of this rezoning, this petition. If you would, please come step forward, state your name and your address, and I will give you three minutes to state your reasoning for, for, being for or against the granting of this petition. Well, it seems like no more questions can come forth. So commissioners, any other comments, or anything that's not, more comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I would give a three, four, or five, or anything, what do you, three seconds.
Second. If it probably goes a second for to approve the rezoning of 1828 Wolf Street from General Residence to Local Commercial, are there any further discussions?
The only other question I have, just a quick one, the other businesses that are currently operating in that building, they're, I mean, this is just going to really make them more compliant with this one now, correct?
That's right.
They're not going to have to reapply or anything?
No. No, I believe they have occupation type certificates, and they have sense, there have been no mission with the businesses.
It, I mean, because the purchase was always physical, a physical, it was only discovered because of the current right to this, and put it to service.
Right. And sometimes, these have popped up in the past, very different, changed, been a decade ago, and just hasn't made, so I think it's pretty sensitive to break, repeat it to more.
Any further discussion, commissioners? Okay, I order the favorable granting of petition, rezoning petition, please raise your hand. Okay, hold on, this motion carries announcement. Thank you, sir, for keeping, for presenting. Okay, that item, pre, item considered for approval, so for September 18, 2019, work session and regular scheduled meeting minutes. Please take a minute to peruse, if there are no changes, entertain a motion, please.
Second.
The problem motion, second, for approval of September 18 work session and regular scheduled meeting minutes. Are there any further discussion? Hearing now, all ready, please raise your hand. Motion carries announcement, please. Okay, item number four, consider approval of resolution number 2019 dash 14, universal system of Georgia, Georgia Archive Local Government Potential Schedule. Ms. Gordon McHale, Assistant City Clerk.
It has been amended, it has been approved for resolution 2019 dash 14, which would approve the use of the universal system of Georgia's, Georgia Archive Local Government Potential Schedule. We are currently utilizing this retention schedule, however, after review of our management program, we realize there was a need to formally review this reservation. was a need to formally review this reservation. The schedule provides retention periods for all records created or received in accordance with the plan. The schedule has been working on parts of the past, and if it's for tonight, we need to be sure to get to department heads and along with the new record destruction book that would be used to check the destruction of records. It's the clerk's recommendation that we wrote this schedule tonight, and there's any additional questions on the page.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioner?
We've been using this work.
How do we currently work that, or is it a combination of digital, paper?
Yes, so currently we are working on scanning digitally all of our records that we have in the records on things. Every time that we have a recording that we're tracking back, we ask that the record department, um, contract everything. But like I said, it's a little bit of a start to scan it on file, so I have, um, digital.
Are you taking some of the older records and working them?
Yeah, yes.
Good. Coming home into the age.
Well, the hard time is still at the level of...
Are they aware?
Yeah.
We can't answer for other departments, but we know our department. We keep our department information, but we can't answer for all the other cities.
Where would we look?
Where?
Where would you look? Long-term, long-term retention.
But each department...
Well, they have retention schedules. It takes how long to keep up with it now?
I'll tell you, it's in the mid-nineties, all of the records, everything was on top of it. It was in a portable file. Do you know where you live also?
Where?
Right upstate or at six oh one Columbus Street. You could not walk in, even part of that, that shared building, because every good office.
That's a fire.
And here's why, here's why I remember that, because I'm sure you, the people that asked and carried those things up, they could not have done it themselves. And have pulled these, they obviously, anything from that thing. It's a bit of a pull, did that thing right there. I couldn't believe it when I saw how ambitious that was. And I, I really didn't know what to blame. So it was efficient, that we were working off it. You couldn't want nothing.
Well, I'm glad, we didn't saw it last year. Anyhow. Anyhow, any further discussion on the item, Commissioners? Probably motion second for approval of resolution twenty nineteen dash fourteen, as presented by Assistant City Clerk, Ms. Gordon McHale. Any further questions? Comments? All ready, please raise your hand. All votes second. Motion carries announcement. Thank you. All right. Continue. Good work you're doing. Item number five, consider approval of agreement with Georgia Water Environmental Services for completion of a stormwater master plan. Taking the area of West Director, Ms. Gera Anderson.
As you know, our stormwater system here in town is old, deteriorating, some places is undersized, and as a result of that, we have several flooding issues around town. Have a lot of what you might call hotspots where we know as soon as it starts raining, we're going to have flooding issues there. And several other areas that aren't quite as bad, but we do have backups and some drainage issues there. As we were, remember, as we were working through the implementation of the stormwater utility last year, we said that one of the first things we would do in the utility would be to formulate a master plan to help identify and prioritize these issues and begin to try to work on and start having some of them off the list. So that's what this, this contract is for, for Georgia Water Environmental Services, to prepare that master plan to help identify and start to come up with some, some preliminary solutions to these drainage issues and prioritize those to help with our funding requirements and grant requirements and go forward. When we got to do this, we put this out to our, request proposal out to our pre-qualified engineering firms. We got back responses from four of those firms. The results are listed on page two of this, it's in the packet. The lowest price, as well as the most compact time range, was Georgia Water Environmental Services. There is a significant difference in price there. So I've had several phone conversations with them in reviewing this proposal, all of these proposals, and I'm convinced that the scope of work that's included in their proposal is consistent with the others. I want to make sure that we're not getting less eco pay, but I'm confident that the product that they'll be giving us will be on forward, the others that are listed there. So between that price and the shortened schedule to jump in there and go at it and work, I'm confident in going forward with them in this agreement. This agreement will be, this master plan will be funded through the stormwater utility. And I know that we've had some discussions about the stormwater utility borrowing from the general fund. So I'll send a conversation with this consultant that, you know, once we get started, that we don't, we need to delay our billing. So if this is approved tonight, then we're going to talk with them a little more about exactly when we want to start this proposal. But so far, they've mentioned they don't mind going ahead and starting and delaying our billing until later in the fall, wants to get some revenue coming in, so that when I'm borrowing additional money to cover the costs of this. But it is budgeted. We actually budgeted ninety thousand dollars in our stormwater master plan for this. So this is the savings of what we had budgeted for this.
Can you ascertain as to why it would take sixty days versus a hundred and eighty or one, twenty days, what was the time? Why is that so disparate?
Why? Why? Is there, they're so much shorter? Just, they're ready to jump in there. They have, I guess, more resources maybe available at the time right now. Some of these other firms are busier right now. Georgia Water just happens to have a little more resources that they're available to put towards this house.
Did you compare or get any referrals from other cities maybe that you toured around?
Yes, sir, I did. They worked around the period area and some cities up in that area. And those, those cities have been satisfied with their work. Georgia Water has been working here for the main county. County's been satisfied with the work that they've done for them.
Is there depth of experience?
Their depth of experience?
Yeah.
Um, they've got a staff who has fifteen, twenty years of principles, have been working in engineering for twenty, maybe twenty-five years or more. They've got several engineers who, I would say, eighteen, ten years of experience in drainage and stormwater plan.
I bet there was a couple of specific project areas mentioned. How, how far will this master plan take us? Is it a five-year plan, a ten-year plan? What are the increments?
We didn't, we haven't specifically defined that, but I do think it's probably something that we want to update maybe on a five-year basis. And, you know, this, this initial plan will obviously be the, because we don't have anything right now, it'd be a little more detailed and a little more involved getting it off the ground. But I do think it's something, you know, five years, hopefully, we will have had some funding, we'll be able to knock out a couple of projects. So I do think we'll revisit it and identify other projects, maybe re-prioritize at that time.
I took a call today from somebody, I'm sure Commissioner Casey can relate to this, on Riverside Drive area, asking that the drainage and the flooding at that top end, as you come on down that way, is really getting bad and causing lots of cars to break paths to rust out different things.
And kind of aside from this, we do have, we're finalizing some plans on Riverside right now to address the issue right there, where you go into the subdivision at the, at the gates, if you will. And then another area right there where you go from old section to the new section. So we're working on some, finalizing some plans. Got a lot, got a lot going on. But hopefully, we can get that underway this fall and get a little relief there.
On the schedule, it says in twenty-eight days against twenty-eight days from starting, there's a meeting, it's a meeting in the city, that meeting, staff, that meeting, condition, who, who that meeting going to be with?
Best, best staff meeting. Sit down and just talk about, the first part of that would be evaluate the existing conditions, basically. And then sit down and, you know, talk to us, here's what we plan on, here's what we determine to be your worst plumbing areas, and then start to talk about how to put together some conceptual solutions to, to resolve those issues.
I just kind of noticed a lot of this whole process, so we, staff, kind of listen to those.
Certainly.
Look at that, for sure.
Apparently, you're doing the survey, Karen. Maybe you can, or, or...
A lot of it will be GIS survey. We have, we've got a good bit of GIS information already. We're still working through the process of completing our GIS inventory of our drainage system. But they will be able to use the grain, or the GIS data we've got, and the, and the LiDAR data from the county for a good bit of this information. They may have to go out and do some, some isolated surveys and measurements of drainage structures and that kind of thing, some measurements at specific areas. But they'll be able to use GIS and LiDAR for a good bit of this.
There's a deliverable. I know that looking on that schedule, the task schedule, one thing it says is complete preliminary cost of design and construction of identified projects. If, like, I'm sure, I'm sure there's a lot of full engineering drawings and bids for that.
No, they're not. Once, this, the deliverable, the basic deliverable will be the master plan document. In that, will be included a capital improvement priority list, which will, like I say, identify conceptual solutions to these, some of these problems. Put enough of concept to be, put a cost with it to help prioritize that way. Once we get rid of the deal project, once we determine which projects are our priority and say they're at the top of the list, we'll then have to go out and get set up a project to design. The design may be close to what they've identified as a conceptual, but, you know, somebody else may say it differently, and it may be different from what's identified.
So just below that, CIP, is that capital improvement?
Capital improvement.
And then what's the OBC?
Operating, operating cost for. And part, part of this also is a plan, a short-term plan, maintenance plan for some small projects that we can identify to work on in-house with our, our forces. You know, maybe we need to replace a section of pipe here and there, maybe a block worth of pipe installed in drainage structure somewhere. You know, some smaller eighty, ten thousand dollar projects that we can identify, and we can tackle those for the public works papers. So there'll be, there'll be more or less two parts to this, right? The capital plan and your in-house and the operator maintenance plan.
Any other questions for Ms. Anderson?
What's the difference between hydraulic and hydrologic and hydraulic analysis?
Hydrologic is rainfall and above-ground rainfall, flooding issues in streets or land flooding. Hydraulic is within pipes and how water operates inside the pipes and carrying in the structure. Yet we have to identify both of those and among those to come up with proper solution.
Got a question. Someone asked this question the other day about our stormwater feed. Realizing that whole physical structure within the city amongst our assess feed, Assistant Mayor is asking me about sanctuary churches, assesses.
Churches are, are not exempt from the feed, they're assessed feed.
That was one of the reasons that it was so difficult.
Sorry. There are no, no structure in the city that's exempt from the feed.
Thank you, sir. Any further questions before I was the city fellow person guy and engineer? If not, I entertain a motion, Commissioners?
Now, motion to approve agreement with Georgia Water Environmental Services for completion of the stormwater master plan.
Second.
Motion second for approval, agreement with Georgia Water Environmental Services for completion of stormwater master plan. Any further discussion?
And just making sure, the disparity in the cost to the other company, they're already vetted all of that stuff. I'm coming, I'm sure you...
I'm confident that they're going to give us the same, same product that they did at the other. We had this by the end of the year.
That's right. They said that was lost, regulations, and that sounds good.
All right. All those ready, please raise your hand. Motion carries announcement. Thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate it. Okay. Now, we're at item number six, which is our city attorney item, to the dossier of what's known as ten sixty-three, the creation of city abundant wireless facilities and attendance orders. Has been put out to the problem.
That's correct. This is the one that's a problem. We discussed it the last time, Commissioners. It required, the requirement of the state codes that we have in place by COVID one, or the back governments. But I think we made it pretty clear last time we presented that we'd be okay. It was approved as a form tonight on books. The only, I believe, the only comments we got in advertising is we were contacted by Horizon's implementation specialist, just requesting a copy of these ordinance and state report with us and sort of try to co-locate, locate small cell bars within the city. I sent over a copy of the ones on Monday, I think, or Tuesday, and they seemed fair or settled.
And Horizon only, it's the only one we heard from, as far as I recall. But no, it'll be other ones. I assume there's approach, but there'll be only ones that contacted the city. I think if we prove it to send them back to you, well...
We sent Horizon copy, uh, one of my other, yeah. Send them to them if they contact me without me having to get them out. The person that contacted us directly appeared to be Horizon's employee.
So if we were contacted, we had to get them out, and trying, there might be, uh, going through GMA, there might be a contact point where we can get the ordinance out there to the other wireless providers, so that they can, is that?
That's, okay, yes, that's what I was. Commissioners of the fans, or, or before, and, uh, has been discussed, and has been out to the public, uh, not the back force for adoption, um, um, and our perusal, I would think, uh, they may have been, uh, presented back to our city attorney.
No, it's just been one type of rights away.
Yes, I remember that. Okay. And then probably motion second for, uh, approval of all the adoption of order one ten sixty-three, uh, any further discussions, uh, comments? More comment, I would say, thank you for getting this out, definitely, you know, getting it out, and, uh, to make sure that we are compliant. If no further questions, Commissioners, the comments, um, all of the favor please raise your hand. All the motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we have something in our regular printed agenda, are there any need for a second session? Yes. Please say everyone for.
Real estate personnel.
Real estate personnel, litigation, law. All for it, all for it, okay.
Ma'am, motion, turn to the second session, real estate personnel, and location.
Second.
Motion second for, for Commissioners to, for the second session, for real estate personnel and location. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all of the favor please raise your hand. All right, see, I vote to the second session, absolutely, we should return back to our respective, uh, attorney. So we now enter into the second session.